Thank you, Mayor Mo. Madam Kirk, please call to roll.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. DeWalt? Mr. Les?
Here.
President Sitnor?
Here.
Mayor Mo.
Madam Kirk, you can call the, now it's Mr. Councilman DeWalt, please.
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the retreat for January the 4th, 2020. I have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholas. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Madam Kirk, please call to roll.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Sitnor?
Yes. Moving on, I'm for the Mayor and City Council. I'll start tonight with Mr. Councilman Malas.
Thank you, Mr. President. At a meeting today with the National Legal City's Transportation Infrastructure and Services Policy Steering Group, it was pretty robust. We had participants from all across the country, very productive. Big push right now is for the Highway Trust Fund, uh, funds because the transit account of the current fund will run out of funds in 2021. I'd like to offer condolences to the Stoner and Gober families on the recent passing of Bill Stoner. He was a family friend and a friend to many. He was larger than life and we are grateful for all that he shared with the city. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Malas. Councilman Nicholas.
Thank you. Last weekend, I attended the Foot Society Black History Month celebration. I also attended the clergy breakfast that was here last week. There was a lot of great exchange regarding homelessness issues. And I also attended the Business Network last Thursday. It's events that are put on by our Economic and Community Development Department. There's a lot of great information. I'd like to thank Christine and her staff and Leah Steele for all the great work they do. And I would encourage people to get one of these because you can see all of the events throughout the month, off the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholas. Councilman Smith?
I've nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman DeWalt?
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see all the officers here tonight. I have a, just a little bit of a story to tell you over the weekend. In Old Town Laurel, we have Epiphany Parties. I don't understand it too much what exactly it is, but we gather at a residence, we bring a food, and we enjoy ourselves. It lasts for seven weeks. On this, and shortly after that, when the weather gets warm, we have cleanup parties where we gather at someone's house, bring food, and then we go around the old town and we clean up the neighborhoods. This one, this Epiphany Party was at the Laurel Manor House. And if you've never been there, it's an absolute beautiful home. It's a, uh, the first bed and breakfast in Prince George's County, and of course Laurel, too. And, um, it was packed with people. Our group has grown immensely as far as these Epiphany Parties. I'm sure it'll transfer over into our cleanup parties. And the reason I bring this up, the conversation was very upbeat, it was very enjoyable, we were laughing, enjoying great food, and just having a really, really good time. And I didn't hear one single complaint about anything bad going on in the neighborhood. And it's, it's in such contrast to the not too long ago where we were having conversations about people entering our homes illegally, stealing things from my neighbors' homes, breaking into cars, stealing credit cards and using them. And, uh, and actually people, we, I ended up having a big town meeting, and this was first when Chief Hamill took over. And I think Champ, Chief Hamill was surprised at the amount of people that showed up at the meeting. But, um, I got questions all the time, should I buy a gun? Uh, I'm thinking about moving. It was a very, very scary time. And even my neighbor, Tommy Skaggs, who's a firefighter, had a guy on a Saturday night come into his home. He only made it to the foyer, but he did enter his house. Things have changed, and you could see that I, I would definitely attribute it to the leadership that we have now. With Chief Hamill in the Police Department and Aaron Waddell being the President of Laurel FOP Lodge 11, that change of leadership has transpired our agency into a place where people and qualified officers want to come. And now, uh, with the upcoming contract, it looks like they've gotten a great contract to where they want to stay here. And, uh, my constituents and I at these parties and stuff, people mention it to me all the time about how great it's going right now. And I would like to just bring their, uh, gratitude towards everybody in the room here tonight. I do have one other story, and I would like to recognize Diana San Sadi. She was a gra, she's a my neighbor, she lived in my neighborhood for 24 years. She lived at a house owned by the church. Well, the church is selling three of those houses, and one of them happens to be hers. And she's lived there for 24 years. She's a member, a graduate of Citizens Police Academy. She helps out with Laurel Cats as a member with them. She also, uh, over at the church, she's with the ladies' club at the church, and she takes care of the kitchen. If you ever saw her, she's the pitcher of volunteerism. She would be on all those traffic details, directing traffic and blocking traffic. And I know as a police officer, those were the details you didn't really enjoy, but she was always out there. And now, and she was an absolute great neighbor. She cleaned up the neighborhood, cleaned up her section of the street, always had, helped everybody else around her. And now the church is selling her house. And this is a lady who's lived here for so long and has done so much volunteer work, yet she's not able to afford the affordable housing what we have in Laurel. We need to really, really address the issue about affordable housing eventually so that we don't lose like people like Diana where she has to move out of the city. That's all I have to say tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Um, I'm going to talk about Black History Month. As you know, February was designated as Black History Month, so I'm just going to give you a couple of background on Dr. Colagi Woodson, where he was born at and how, how he came up with Black History Month. Just going to read some things to you right fast. Carter Goddard Woodson was born on December 19th, 1875, in New Canton, Virginia, to Anna Elise Woodson, Woodson and James Woodson. The fourth of seven children, young Woodson worked as a sharecropper and as a miner to help his family. He began high school in his late teens and provided excellent student completing four years of course of study in less than two years. After attending Beirut College in Kentucky, Woodson worked for the US, the United States Government as a education superintendent in the Philippines, earning a master's degree from the University of Chicago. Woodson went on to receive a doctorate from Harvard University in 1912, becoming just the second African American earned a PhD from that prestigious institution. After finishing his education, Woodson dedicated himself to the fear of African American history. His message was that blacks should be proud of their heritage and other Americans should be proud of it also. In 1915, Dr. Woodson and several of his friends in Chicago established Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. In 1916, in January 1916, Woodson began a publication of a scholar journal of Negro history. It never missed an issue despite the Great Depression, loss of support from the foundation and two world wars. In 2002, it was renamed the Journal of African American History and continued to be published by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. In 1926, Dr. Woodson founded Negro History Week, designated for the second week of February to honor Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. As we know, Abraham Lincoln was the president that signed the Declaration of Freedies slaves, and Frederick Douglass was an escaped slave here from Maryland, was, um, big into abolition of French slaves. But that's why Dr. Woodson name actually had February as Black History Month because those two great heroes of our country. So in 1970, um, black students and black educators at Kent State University expanded the idea to include an entire month, beginning on February the 1st, 1970. President Gerald Ford in 1976 declared Black History Month as a national observance. So every president since 1976 observed, proclaiming Black History Month. And so, um, President Donald Trump called upon the public officials, educators, all Americans observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities. You think a lot of folks say, no, Dr. Woodson often said that he don't want black history just to be included, he wanted black history included in American history. Therefore, we still got a lot to go, that we don't need Black History Month all the time, but once we really recognize history that we all contribute to this country, that we can just teach black history all year round. But I just wanted to give you a little background, Dr. Colagi Woodson, since it's Black History Month, acknowledge him as well. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. First, um, let me recognize members of our public safety family, their police department is here tonight, as well as the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department members who are, be sworn in here later. Um, I do want to offer condolences to our friend here in the city and many others, Bill Stoner, as you heard Councilman Les say. Uh, Bill Stoner, for many years, on July 4th Committee, many other committees, but was really part of, and what got to, uh, what really grew here in the city is the illiteracy program that he took care of and, and helped many, many people, and he'll be greatly missed. Um, also Jenny Carmen, uh, from our Department of Park and Recs on the passing of her brother. Um, also Joanne Barr, um, on the, who's our Director of Park and Recreation, lost her mother the other day. And as well as, as members of the Fire Department know, Mike and Barbara Selner on the passing of their son, Alan Selner. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend the Footage Society, the Black History Month and their exhibit along with Councilmember Nicholas, and we appreciate that. Great business, doing great things on Route One there, Boulevard cleaners, you can find them there, and, um, just really working hard to make things happen in the community. We appreciate that. The, um, did have the opportunity to go to the Laurel Historical Society Museum, the, um, the kickoff event that they held, and, uh, just a really good time, and a whole lot of people were there, so, um, it was very good. We also had the opportunity, um, to attend the Warhorse Program and tour that facility along with the President of Council, um, our chief, our deputy, our city administrator. Really a great program that they're doing in Baltimore County for, uh, public safety officials, and we want to take a look at that as well. Uh, you heard we held the clergy breakfast meeting, I want to thank all of our clergy that continue to support, um, our efforts here and work with the city. As well as, I did have the opportunity to attend the swearing in ceremony of Tiffany Green, who is the, uh, first fire chief for Prince George's County, and, uh, was there with Vic Whipple, who is not only the President of Laurel Fire Department, but also the first Vice President of Prince George's County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association. Uh, we did have my time with the mayor tonight, I'm sorry, we did have some people show, I was not able to be there. Uh, I had to go to Annapolis tonight, there was a bill in Annapolis that I needed to testify on behalf of the city, which is PG Bill 31120 regarding our emergency management, our emergency manager as well, um, and making sure that, um, we have our own standing facility and are able to, um, work with other jurisdictions. So that came up all of a sudden this afternoon, so. Uh, last thing, I did have the opportunity to, um, meet with Councilman Denoga today, very good meeting, uh, we meet, uh, pretty much regularly, and, um, again, just a, a good meeting, and I appreciate, um, his efforts of working with us and in the city. Uh, one announcement, Mr. President, the, uh, February the 17th, city offices will be closed for observance of, of President's Day. Um, and I do want to make a comment on, uh, Councilman DeWalt's on the affordable housing. Um, everybody up here, we had our mini retreat, one of the things we do want to work on is affordable housing. $1,300, almost $1,400, um, for ours affordable housing program. We were one of the first that had affordable housing program, but 13, almost $1,400 is not affordable to many people in the market that we're in. One thing of interest today, uh, we did receive a report from Council of Government, COG as they call it, um, Bill 700 or 70 pages that, on the report. The report that you gave me that showed me Laurel had the lowest, um, about 70 pages, we'll hopefully share with the council, I haven't read it, but Bill pulled out a, a piece in there that has the DC, Virginia and Maryland, and 1389 was the city of Laurel, and we're pretty much the lowest right now and out of that market. There's some that are 18, 20, or $2,000 a month. Um, so everybody's grappling with the same thing, and the administration looks forward to working with council members, um, to try to, uh, resolve this issue. Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item number four, a general public hearing. A member of the public is asked to sign the speaker's list at the back of the council chambers. The council president called the speaker from the sign in sheet. Each speaker is asked to give their name and address for the record. Each speaker allowed three minutes to speak. I open the public hearing at 7:16. I have Aaron Waddell, please come forward. Want to, want to speak now, or you want to speak later? Okay. You're welcome.
My name is Aaron Waddell, I'm the President of the Fraternal Order of Police Laurel Lodge 11. I was also the head of the five-person bargaining unit from our organization during the recent collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the city. And, uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to address a couple of items related to this agreement. First and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Mo, the city administrator, Mr. Bill Goddard, and the rest of the City of Laurel Bargaining Unit, Ms. Luann Crook, Ms. Lisa Woods, and Lieutenant Pietro, also the, uh, the rest of the FOP Bargaining Unit. I also want to thank Chief Hamill for his support and open line of communication as we continue working together and moving forward. This bargaining process was extremely cordial and professional, something many FOP lodges do not have the luxury of experiencing during negotiations. In May of 2019, our board members met with Mayor Mo and voiced our concerns on recruitment and retention challenges facing the Laurel Police Department. The mayor implemented every lateral officer recruiting incentive the FOP suggested, and he secured funding to bring those incentives to life. Within two months, the FOP had recruited six lateral officers from other agencies who made an immediate positive impact on the day-to-day operations of the Laurel Police Department. I do want to take a moment to address a couple of concerns raised at the last council work session in regards to foreign language bonuses. The FOP made no proposals to increase this amount during negotiations. Our priority was fixing the current outdated police pay scale, which was falling behind surrounding police agencies. We understand there's only a finite amount of money in the budget and changes must be prioritized. It is worth noting that three of the six recent lateral hires speak a foreign language, two of those speaking Spanish. Additionally, the number of $3,000 was thrown out as the benchmark for foreign language pay set by Howard County. With the new pay scale set forth in this agreement, every officer, not just those who speak a foreign language, will be receiving at least a $3,000 salary increase on July 1st. As a side note, I do hope the hardworking civilian employees of the Laurel, of the City of Laurel will not be forgotten in the next budget cycle. The hardworking men and women of the departments such as the Budget and Personnel Services, Parks and Rec, Public Works, Information Technology, and that's just to name a few, provide values, valuable support to the Laurel Police Department, and their service to the citizens of Laurel should not be overlooked. This new agreement also addresses the second challenge we brought to Mayor Mo in May of 2019, retaining our well-trained, experienced police officers who outside agencies were luring away with better pay and benefits after receiving their initial training at the Laurel Police Department. As Mayor Mo and the council members stated leading up to the recent elections, the number one priority of the citizens of Laurel is public safety. Mayor Mo and the city council have made it clear with this agreement that their priority is also public safety. The recent lateral officer recruiting incentives and changes resulting from this new agreement show that Mayor Mo and this council are willing to do what it takes to keep our highly trained, well-qualified police officers here, serving the citizens of Laurel. And for that, I would like to once again thank you on behalf of the brothers and sisters of the Fraternal Order of Police Laurel Lodge 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Anyone else wish to speak? I close the public hearing at 7:19. Okay, moving on to next part of the agenda, swearing in of Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. I turn over to Mayor Mo.
Vic, come on up. I want him to introduce everybody, if you would. Vic Whipple is the President of Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, and as you heard, Vic was also the, uh, first Vice President of the Prince George County Volunteer Fire Association. Got their hands full, got a lot to, uh, dealing with the volunteers and, uh, making sure that apparatuses staff, that pieces of equipment are getting out the door and that we're well-trained. Vic, Vic and the Chief Coates both, um, do an excellent job of that, as well as all the members. So, if you would, kind of tell everybody who they are and say anything before we swear.
Sure, sure. Well, first, thanks, Mayor, for presiding over this ceremony that's become a rich tradition for a lot of years, um, in this department. And traditions are pretty important, I think, especially these days, that for us to stay together, stay as one, work as partners. Um, the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department has been in business for over 117 years now, protecting the citizens, residents and visitors of Laurel. So, that's in huge part due to the partnership we have with the mayor, the city council and Emergency Services Commission. So we want to thank you, we look forward to working with you and the council this coming year. That will do some introductions. Chief Coates boat, Jim Coates boat, would you like to come up first? We have Treasurer Rosenmar, Vice Chairman of the Board, Doug Robinson, Board Member Debbie Farrell, Board Member Paul Immonato, Board Member Ricky Bittenger, Junior Vice President Tim Thaxton, Financial Secretary Lena Grant, Lieutenant Greg Matsonheimer, Lieutenant Mike Philanga, Lieutenant Tiffany Lewis, and Deputy Chief Mike Moore.
So if you all will raise your right hand and repeat after me, stating your name where I state mine. I, Craig Mo, do solemnly swear. Who said Craig Mo? Demotion. To uphold the duties of the office to which I have been elected, that I will uphold and abide by, the Constitution and bylaws of the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. I will protect all monies and property, and trust it to my care. I will turn over same to my successor, upon the completion of my office. So help me God. Congratulations. So real quick, I do want to point out one thing. Um, you know, this is our celebration of 150 years. Vic Whipple is the fine example of volunteer that continues to serve. Vic was injured in 19, 19 what? Seventy seven, I was going to say seventy, 77, down at Ninth and Main Street, and you can see what happened to Vic. He continues to serve, and that is a dedicated volunteer, more importantly, somebody that cares about their community. I always want to acknowledge Vic for that. We're going to give to Vic, just so everybody has, we have, um, our 150th challenge coin, anniversary coin that we want to give to the new officers. I'll give you yours. But we have one free official in Lena's, congratulations. Thanks, Vic.
Now, once again, thank the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department for volunteering to service our community. We're going to move on to item number six on our agenda. Our introduction to the first public hearing, a resolution number four, 2020, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to reaffirm the national incident management system. I read into record for the first hearing. Open the public hearing at 7:25. I close the public hearing at 7:25. Second public hearing with possible action scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Number B, introduction of the first public hearing ordinance 1952, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, repealing and reenacting the amendments to Chapter 18, Building and Building Regulation of the Laurel City Code, Articles 1 through Article 13, adopted on 2000, adopted, excuse me, 2018, addition of the International Building Code to include Appendix G, the State of Maryland Fire Prevention Code, the National Fire Protection Association Code, the International Residential Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Existing Building Code, the Maryland Accessibility Code, the International Energy Conservative Code, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the International Property Management Maintenance Code, and 2017 addition of National Electric Code and renumbering section of providing effective date. Deputy Fire Marshal, you want to speak first?
Thank you, Mr. President. As discussed at the last week's work session, the Office of the Fire Marshal has proposed ordinance 1952. This purpose of the ordinance is to repeal and replace Chapter 18 in Laurel City Code as required by the State of Maryland.
Thank you, Deputy Fire Marshal. Open the public hearing at 7:27. I close the public hearing at 7:27. Possible action, to vote on this on the next city council meeting on Monday, February 24th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Moving on to item number C, introduction of the first public hearing, a regulation number 320, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Maryland for the purpose of approving an agreement between the City of Laurel and Fraternal Lodge of Police Number 11. Yeah, read the record, I read the first, read into record. Open the public hearing at 7:28. Mr. Goddard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this collective bargaining agreement represents the third agreement between the City of Laurel and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 11, that dates back to July of 2014. This is a three-year agreement that will extend the current contract until June of Does this agreement include every single item that is important to the FOP and the City of Laurel, such as the enhanced specialty pay for officers with second languages, or enhanced retirement benefits? No, Mr. President, it does not. In a perfect world and unlimited financial resources, the FOP would love for the city to agree to everything that they want, and the city would love to give them everything they deserve. But they understand, and they appreciate the fact that the City of Laurel, as many other municipalities, simply do not have a bottomless pit of money to fulfill the wishes and the desires of everyone. But, Mr. President, we are blessed. This city is blessed to have an FOP and their legal team that not only understands these limitations, but respects the process to achieve the best agreement for their members within these limitations. The bargaining session began on October 15th, 2019, where we sat down, agreed to the ground rules, and we set a target to complete the negotiations by December 31st. And we're happy to report that we completed ahead of schedule. After a long day... After a long day on November 22, we finished the agreement. The agreement before you is one that I believe represents a good faith commitment by both sides to address the most important and challenging issues that confront the city and FOP as we struggle to hire and retain qualified law enforcement officers. I believe this agreement will help us maintain our competitive edge with other municipalities and surrounding jurisdictions, and one that also represents the city's commitment to excellence for our community and the women and men of the Laurel Police Department. And to those officers, to those officers of the Laurel Police Department who stuck with us, stuck with us as other departments in the region offered you incentive packages up to $25,000 to leave the city and to join their team, I alone, the Mayor, and the City Council, thank you. Thank you for sticking with us. Thank you very much for what you do. We're proud of you. We're proud of each and every one of you and appreciate your contributions to the safety of our citizens. And before I close, I want to thank and recognize the bargaining team that represented the members of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, Number 11. And I want to ask them to stand. President Aaron Waddell, Vice President Zachary Rixine, State FOP Delegate Jesse Cunningham, Chaplain Zachary Berry, and Lamar Gale. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And I also want to thank the legal team, the team that represented the FOP during this negotiations process. They are a well-respected team of labor law professionals that represent police department FOPs all across the state of Maryland and recognized by many as the best of the best. They are dedicated to their clients, they're tough at the bargaining table, but most importantly, they're honest. They're honest and they're fair. I want to ask them to stand and be recognized. Mr. Herb Wiener, Bonnie Talbot, and Karen Dowdy, please. Also, I want to recognize and thank the city's team. Our Deputy City Administrator and Chief Operating Officer, Lou Anne Crook, and I believe she's at another meeting this evening. Lieutenant Brad DiPietro from Laurel Police Department, Lisa Woods, our Human Resource Officer. And while she did not sit at the table, our Chief Finance Officer, without Michelle, we can't get this done. She has the magic behind the scenes to make the, make all the numbers come together and make it right. So Michelle, thank you very much for your efforts as well. Mr. President, I've had the opportunity to sit on both sides of the bargaining table during my career, representing thousands, literally thousands of employees on the labor side and on the management side of a number of jurisdictions in this region. And I can't begin to tell you how impressed I was with the level of professionalism displayed by this FOP and their legal team. While the city did not always agree with the various positions presented by the FOP, they consistently maintained an open mind and a high level of respect for the fiscal impact that this agreement has on the city and the citizens of Laurel. They also appreciate the contributions and commitments each of you make, each of you as our council, as our mayor, to ensure that the police officers in the City of Laurel are recognized for the challenges and dangers they are confronted with each day while they're serving this great community. They clearly recognize how fortunate they are to have an executive and legislative team that recognizes their contributions to keeping the citizens of Laurel safe and how deeply you care about them and their personal safety. Also, I want to recognize one more individual whose responsibility it is to ensure on a daily basis that the city remains a safe place to live, to work, and to visit. An individual who I often tell that the responsibility of the Administrator's office is not to run the police department, but to provide you with the resources that you need to be the best police department in the region and the nation. Chief Hamel, your support for the city and the FOP did not go without notice during this process, and we're fortunate to have you as our Chief of Police. Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity to represent the city. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garter. Any questions from the council? Yeah, I close the public hearing at 7:35. I read the title in the record for the first hearing. Make a motion to suspend the rules. We can vote on the FOP contract tonight.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Laszlo.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Laszlo?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Sitner?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
President Sitner?
Yes.
Mayor Mo?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, FOP Lodge Number 11. All right. We can move on and call for a vote for the approval of the contract of the FOP, Lodge 11, and the City of Laurel, Maryland. Need a motion?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of Resolution Number 3-20, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Maryland for the purpose of approving an agreement between the City of Laurel and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 11.
Thank you, Mr. Laszlo. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholas. Madam Clerk, call for a roll.
Mr. Laszlo?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
President Sitner?
Yes. I guess I can say now, congratulations.
Mayor Mo?
I'm gonna support the motion. I do want to make just a few comments real quick. I also want to thank the FOP and, Bill, under your leadership, I want to thank the management side for the work they did, as well as you heard the Administrator talk about the legal team from the FOP. I keep trying to tell the FOP, don't bring the legal side, we can get it done quicker. This way, you won't have to pay them. But they do an outstanding job. They work with us and they work with the FOP and give them great advice. As I've always said, not everybody gets what they want on either side. I think everybody gives and takes a little bit, and that's why we've been able to get this done. And I think we've done it respectfully, and I do appreciate that. I think that, I think that sends a signal not only to the Mayor and Council and all of our officers, but the general public as well. And I think that really says a lot about the two when we talk about negotiations. I know that when we first did the first contract, everybody was really worried about how it was gonna end up. And here we are, a third one, and I can say that it has worked very well. I do want to just, you know, the council has made a commitment here, and I think it's important. You know, when we, we look at this over a three-year period, we're talking of at least over $1.7 million. You know, 1.2, over 1.2 over the salaries, then you have the pension contributions, the workman's comp, FICA, and then there's the compensation plan and other things. So we've really made a commitment to retain our officers. You know, this council also approved, you know, the $150,000 that we have not had to use, but is there to work on other things within the department. And we've made that commitment. I've heard council members on what they've, what they've expressed. We will continue to work through some of those issues and see if we can find common ground with everybody and do something. But I think this is a true commitment from members of this council for voting in the affirmative for ratifying this contract, and we do appreciate it. Mr. President, we appreciate all the work that you and your officers have done, and we look forward to a continued working relationship. So, Mr. President, thank you, and thank members of the council for the work that you all have done here tonight. And I concur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we're gonna transition to signing the contract now, or we want to do promotions first?
Excuse me. Before you get started, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I always have the opportunity to make comments on Facebook, and a lot of the officers read them. But while I have a lot of you all in the room, I just want to say thank you for your service. I see you in the streets, and I see you helping people going above and beyond. And when I looked at Facebook last night, I saw one officer that had a dog in the back seat that they had, someone had lost, and you all were making sure they got back to the owner. So I thank you for always going above and beyond and for helping the citizens of Laurel. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other councilmembers want to speak? Congratulations to the FOP.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to say thank you to the FOP Lodge and the police force just for supporting our city here. It's really, I would say, it's really a testament to your work and seeing you guys out in the streets, talking even with the community, and all your posts online. I see, as you mentioned, about the lost dog and even the seagulls that were right over there at the, that, at the Dollar Tree. Yeah, so just the fact, I mean, to some, it may not be that serious, but to you, it is, and for that, I know my life is in good hands. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, Councilman Smith. Anyone else want to speak?
Mr. President, I'd like to say something. I strongly believe that this contract with the members of the Laurel Fraternal Order Police Lodge, Number 11, will provide the neat, much-needed stability to our police department in the upcoming years. And it's very, very evident, like I said earlier, it's very, very evident in our neighborhoods that our neighborhoods are a lot safer as a result of these actions. And I said at the beginning, it's because of the leadership we've now provided within the department and the leadership with President Waddell in the Laurel Fraternal Order Police. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Walker. We just move on to signing out. Motion, so, morning? Chief Hamel, Attorney General, Chief Hamel.
All right, good evening. I'll just add, thank you for your positive vote on that, on the contract. It's very well-deserved, very well-earned by the men and women of this police department. And I've got, about halfway through my first year, very impressed by this police department, the men and women serving this community. They deserve this, this recognition and this bolster, this bump to their salaries. So thank you. In keeping with the good news theme, we're gonna promote three corporals. This is a frontline supervisor position on the police department. The day-to-day work of this police department, the day-to-day out in the community, getting the work done, keeping the community safe, really falls on the shoulders of the sergeants and the corporals and the officers. The sergeants and corporals direct the day-to-day activities. So having the, I'll say it, the guts, take this test and take on this additional responsibility, not doing it for the pay for corporal, they're doing it because they care about this, they're doing it because they care about this community, they care about this police department. It is a very important leadership role, and I'm proud to promote three of our current and future leaders of this police department. So if I can get Laura Wilson, Thomas Hock, and Matthew Jordan, come on up.
Families are here, so, okay, would you guys just sit? Oh, you got them?
Could be a work comp claim. They told me not to let you do that anymore. All right, so in keeping with tradition here, we're gonna ask who in your family or friends or anybody else is gonna pin your badge on, so you can go. Stephanie, come on up, please. This is a tradition through police departments throughout the country of having a loved one pin on their badge when they get promoted, so.
I was gonna go back and get it, but I'm not going in your face. Very good. Never been to my wife's room, so.
Chief Hamel. Corporal Wilson with the Laurel Police Department. Chief Hamel caught me off-guard when I came into work today saying we're all gonna have to make brief speeches, so I didn't have time to prepare anything, so I'm just gonna be winging this. I want to say thanks to all the support for everyone who came out tonight for the council meeting and to show their support for those of us getting promoted right now. I'm very glad that I came to this meeting. It's actually very refreshing to see how much support that we have in this room, so I want to thank each of you on both of the sides here. I really want to thank Corporal Jordan and Corporal Hock. I don't think we could have done this without, without all of us. We really pushed each other. You guys are the definition of teamwork. We really pushed each other to keep studying and get it this far, so I really want to thank you guys. I want to thank my parents who are here, who helped me with the study material and the study guides. Yeah, I'm not good at these things, so I'm just probably gonna leave it at that. I just want to say thank you to all the support. I'm gonna work hard to be a good leader, and I hope to make everyone proud and do the best that I can.
All right, who's, who's next, senior? Oh, there we go.
Now Corporal Matt Jordan. I want to thank councilmembers, Mayor Mo, Chief Hamel, commanders that are here, my fellow officers that are here. I'll just echo what Laura said. Laura and Tommy, we were on the same shift on midnights together. We studied a lot of nights, almost every night together. Sergeant Rixine was our sergeant at the time. He gave us the opportunity to study, so gotta thank him. Appreciate that. to study. So got to thank him. Appreciate that. My family who's here, my sister, my niece and nephews, mom and dad, my neighbors. One neighbor in particular back there, he's 11 years old, gave me good playlists to listen to before the test, some pump-up music. So thanks, Riley. I got my shark socks on for you too. So, but just thank you to everybody who's supported us along the way and is continuing to support us and help us. My squad's helping me a lot, big time, being a supervisor. Officers are doing well. My sergeants helped me along the way, learned the ropes. So thank you to everybody, and I appreciate it.
So say it's the first time I've heard Tommy.
That's actually a go-by.
Okay, I did not know that.
Hello, Corporal Tommy Hauk. I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for coming out and supporting us. Thank you, city council. It's been a lot going through this process. Me and Jordan have been through it a few times, and it's tough. It's really tricky. And I think we really pulled together to support each other, as Wilson said, Corporal Wilson. I just want to thank my family. They've been a huge support throughout this whole thing, through the ups and downs, through when I passed or when I failed. I just want to say thank you for picking me back up. My friends, my coworkers, everyone who's just pulled behind me. It means more than you'll ever know. Thanks for teaching me how to be a good supervisor. Thanks for taking me under your wing. Thanks for shooting for me. Thanks for it all. I really appreciate it. And, you know, keep teaching me, and thank you.
Matt, I got nothing to save you on that. I'm thinking, I'm really thinking. Corporal Hauk got it right. This is tough. These promotional processes are tough. I've been through too many of them to even remember, but I still remember that first corporal sergeant's test where I was, did those together. And what you pour into that, you pour your heart and soul into that, and your family does as well. You invest so much, and there's a lot riding on it. Unfortunately, not everybody gets it. It's, not everybody gets trophy here. And you have, you've really got to prove your metal. And then you got to prove your medal in front of people that don't know you. You go before a board. And I'll tell you this, for those of you who haven't done it, you have no clue what's coming when you go in front of that board. You got to swing it, and you got to work hard, demonstrate your hard work through your, your history, through your time on the police department. And I will say the cream does rise to the top. This is an excellent group, future leaders, current leaders of the police department. So if you'd join me and give me them one more Well, I have to talk to a certain sergeant about studying this study habit thing, so...
Transitioning to signing of the contract between the Laurel city administrator and
So before we sign the contract, we, we're going to sign the resolution to allow us to sign the contract, which is myself and President Sidnor. We're not like the president where we're going to sign each one with a different pen. We only got three pens. Where's Kim or? Oh, yeah, yeah. She's... I'm going over here and sign it. You don't get a pen then. So again, I want to, again, thank the, take this opportunity to thank the FOP again. I think this is, as I said, says a lot, Aaron in particular, working relationship you have with your, your organization and working with the city. We truly appreciate that. It's an honor to sign this tonight. So while we're here, we're going to take the opportunity for those that are here to come up and sign. So Bill, why don't, why don't you come up and sign? And anybody else
The commitment that, the commitment that was made by the mayor and the city council here really reflects the services that have been provided by the members of FOP. I've been in this game for close to 50 years. I know good police departments and bad police departments. This is really a really good police department. You don't want to go down the other road. You just have to look up the road about 20 miles, where I spend every day trying to figure out what went wrong in a really great police department that now can't. That will not happen in Laurel. It will not happen because you will maintain the history of excellence by paying these people a fair wage and giving them the incentives to continue services that every citizen in this city deserves. So, thank you.
Actually, thank you all very much. The president needs to close the meeting out, I guess, now, right?
Once again, congratulations, Lodge Number 11. Looking forward to work with you guys for the next three years. Keep us safe. Keep doing a great job. Meeting adjourned.